Or Aaron.
Did you print this?
I did not.
Do you want it?
Oh, I got it. Okay, where do I go?
All yellow.
Start here, yellow.
Welcome, everybody, to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, June twenty first, two thousand twenty-two at six P. M. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would stand, and then followed by the invocation from Reverend Daryl Keeney from Lighthouse Baptist Church at thirty-nine nineteen Green Avenue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God, we're in a time of unique challenges and, and really just some really tough situations going on in our world today. So, Lord, I pray wisdom and discernment for these council members, for the administration of the city gathered here as well, and dealing with what is under their purview. God, give them just incredible skill. Lord, I feel blessed to be a part of this community, and I'm so grateful for the good things that are going on here. God, pray your continued blessing upon this community, its people, and that you would be glorified in all that's done and said here tonight. Pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Keeney. I will call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take a roll call, please?
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five, or item four, sorry, Open Meetings Act. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, Approval of Agenda, Consent Agenda, Claims and Advisory Committee Reports, five A, Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
Yep, I move we approve the agenda.
Motion by Burn, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. And do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burn, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
I'm voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, we have no special presentations this evening. Item eight, Organizational Matters, eight A, Request Appointment of Rich Casey to fill the remaining term of Ward Two, City Council Member, and shall hold office for the unexpired term and until a successor is elected and qualified. And I'll take a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve the appointment of Mr. Rich Casey to fill the remaining war term of Ward Two, City Council Member, and shall hold the office for the unexpired term and until a successor is elected and qualified.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Cook, second by Welch. And I just want to start out with some discussion, just to recap for the record. The mayor appoints a candidate to fill out the term, which would be through November eighth of this year, and then it would be up to that candidate or other candidates to run in an election, either by petition, which is putting their name on the ballot. They have to go out and get signatures to, to run to do that. I think it's about four to five hundred. Or you can do a write-in campaign. First fear was, you know, we wouldn't get anybody interested in running for the ward, which that fear was squashed. I had five candidates, and I think all five of them, I think the city council received all the information on them, but they're five good qualified candidates, people interested in running for the ward. First one, I think these are in the order they came in, Richard Casey. Rich was, he's been on the city planning department for seven years, retired military. Eric Ritz, he's been on the Planning Commission for eight years. So both of them have already done service with the city. John Horse Chief, he was a candidate for Metro Community Board, I believe, this last election. Did, did well in the voting in, in the Bellevue precincts. Stephen Lang Ramos. And not a lot of community involvement yet, but very interested in getting involved in the community. Talked with each one of these, so a very good candidate as well. And then Keith Clark, another very qualified candidate. Again, not, not experienced in, in community work, but willing to step up and, and work for his community. So that was very encouraging. I did send it out to the council members, asked for feedback, and I think the feedback was pretty, pretty much unanimous, or close to anyway, between first and second choices. Richard Casey is one that I am appointing, and hope that you confirm him this evening. But he is, again, he's been on the city planning for seven years, retired Command Chief Master Sergeant in two thousand two, runs the transportation for Bellevue Public Schools, and just a good, good, solid candidate, and I've got a lot of good feedback from the council members. So I don't know if anybody has anything else they want to say. I'll have Rich come up here. Councilman Preister?
Mayor, I would just add, he's also been serving on the CDBG Committee as well and doing a good job there, making recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Rich, if you would come forward, I'll give you just a minute to introduce yourself, actually to the podium. Yep, thank you.
Well, I think you already told everybody about me, but first of all, I want to clarify, it's six hundred signatures, not four hundred. And when I found that out, I almost changed my mind. I am Rich Casey, and my wife, Indy, and I retired here in two thousand two after two previous tours here, a total of seven years. We have two children, one lives in Lincoln, one lives here in Omaha, eight, or six grandchildren, soon to be eight, I think. We're, we're very happy to be here. I always tell folks, the first time we were stationed here, I couldn't understand why anybody would want to live here, but I came from central California, beautiful area, and the first day we got here, it snowed in October, and I couldn't understand why anybody lived here. Second time, I fell in love with it. We knew after our second tour here, this is where we wanted to retire. We absolutely love it here. Taught school for two years immediately after I retired, and Dr. Deegan Superintendent, at that time, asked me to take over the Transportation Department, something I thought I'd do for a couple of years, and here I am eighteen years later, and I absolutely enjoy it, working for Bellevue Schools, living in Bellevue. I don't think I could ask for anything better in my first retirement. So I appreciate the vote and, and the vote of confidence. I'll tell you, already walking around trying to gain signatures, I, I was expecting a lot of hard questions, but instead what I got was a lot of comments and very positive things about Bob Stent, and it was quite an eye-opener. It was actually emotional at a couple of homes that I was at, some of the things that they said about Bob. So I know Bob leaves absolutely a wonderful, huge shoes to fill. And again, I do appreciate your vote and confidence to, to make an attempt to serve the citizens of Ward Two and filling Bob's shoes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rich, and we're, we're glad you're in Bellevue, so. Okay, unless there's any other comments or questions, we have a, just buried my paperwork. Motion by Cook, second by Welch to approve the appointment of Rich Casey. So please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, and welcome aboard, Rich. Rich will be, will get the oath of office at the July fifth, two thousand twenty-two meeting, and will be seated up here that evening. So again, thank you for applying, and thank you to all the candidates for taking an interest. Really appreciate it. It's nice to know there's, there's people out there interested. All right, we'll move on to item nine, Approved Citizen Communications. We did not receive any. Item ten, Liquor Licenses, we have none this evening. Item eleven, Ordinances for Adoption, third reading. Item eleven A, Ordinance Number four zero nine nine, Request to Rezone Lots One Through Nine, Fontanel Hills Estates, being a replat of Lot One, Fontanel replat eight, and lots twelve, thirteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, fifty-five A, two thirty-three and two thirty-four, Fontanel, and half of vacated Laurel Lane from RS one twenty, PS to RE, for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicant Hawkins and Strom Holdings LLC, general location, Martin Drive and Ridgewood Drive, Martin Drive and Ridgewood Court. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero nine nine, An Ordinance to Amend the Official Zoning Map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Martin Drive and Ridgewood Drive, and Martin Drive and Ridgewood Court, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Councilwoman Welch?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Ordinance Number four zero nine nine.
Motion by Welch, second by Preister. Are there any comments or questions on eleven A? Councilman Preister?
Mayor, I would just comment that I think we listened carefully at the hearing last time, and that we were responsive to the residents that had concerns, and I think all of those concerns can really be remedied with some of the purchases. I think this will really aid it, even though at first they opposed it. So I just want to comment to them in particular, I hope things are moving forward and hope the sales go through, and I think this will not impede anything and may facilitate it and make it better. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, we have motion by Welch, seconded by Preister. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven A one, Request to Preliminary Plat Lots One Through Nine, Fontanel Hills Estates. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion that we approve item eleven A one. Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Cook. Any comments or discussion? Okay, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven B, Ordinance Number four one zero zero, Request to Rezone Lots One ninety-two through two sixty-six, and Outlot One, Lakewood West, being a plating of Tax Lot fourteen, located in the southwest quarter of Section thirty-one, Township fourteen North, Range thirteen East of the sixth P. M., Sarpy County, Nebraska, and a replat of Outlot H, Lakewood West, from A G and RS seventy-two to R G fifty, for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicant Woodsonia Real Estate, Inc., general location, one seventeen fifteen South Sixtieth Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
I'm going to have Shirley read it, my computer locked up.
Ordinance Number four one zero zero, An Ordinance to Amend the Official Zoning Map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number three six one nine, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about one one seven one five South Sixtieth Street, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide for an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for eleven B? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve Ordinance Number four one zero zero.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Eleven B one, Request to Preliminary Plat Lots One ninety-two through two sixty-six, and Outlot One, Lakewood West. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve Agenda eleven B one.
Motion by Cook, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item twelve, Ordinances for Public Hearing, second reading, twelve A, Ordinance Number four one zero one, An Ordinance Approving the Sale and Conveyance of City Property to Eastern Nebraska Community Action Plan, and authorize Merit to Sign. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number four one zero one, An Ordinance to Approve the Sale and Conveyance of One Parcel of City Property to Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership, Ncap, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and I will open up twelve A for public hearing. If there's anyone here that would like to speak regarding twelve A, please come forward to the podium. Just state your name and address, and please sign in. And we try to limit public talk to five minutes, so if you can wrap it up in that time, that'd be great.
Sure will. Good evening. My name is Dan Esch, two ten, South Sixteenth Street in Omaha, Nebraska is where I reside, but I'm here on behalf of the Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership, which has an address of nineteen oh eight Hancock Street here in Bellevue. I think some of the stuff I'm about to tell you, I think you all are pretty well aware, but just opportunity for me to speak on about Ncap and kind of our plans. If this is approved, certainly take the opportunity to do so, and I'll provide letters to the, to the clerk. On behalf of Ncap Board Directors, our staff, volunteers, and those we serve, thank you for your significant partnership and commitment to serving those in need in this community. The project associated with the ordinance four one zero one has the full support of the Ncap Board of Directors, and we thank you for your thoughtful consideration. With this larger, better-equipped space, Ncap will be able to offer more comprehensive food options, including frozen and perishable items, significantly increase the space for storage of food items via walk-in coolers and freezers, allow us to accept bulk orders and donations, implement the client-choice pantry model, and develop community garden plots as an additional source of fresh food items for pantry guests, enhance food delivery services to increase the number of emergency food packages to those who are unable to travel due to impairments or family caregiver responsibilities, provide a central check-in area and private spaces for individuals meeting for all guests, offer community meeting space for local organizations and civic groups to gather. The City of Bellevue and its residents have been great partners with our agency over the years. The City of Bellevue currently provides space for Ncap and the Food Pantry in Washington Park. The Food Pantry's been providing hunger relief for approximately twenty-five years. Many of those years, volunteer Administrator John Huck led the efforts with the support of the Bellevue Ministerial Association or BMA and other partners, including operational support from Ncap since two thousand seven. BMA leadership asked Ncap to assume fiduciary responsibility for the primary, or for the pantry after John Huck's death in twenty nineteen, and as an organization focused on reducing the challenges of poverty, Ncap accepted the opportunity to carry forward this important work, and the transition was completed in April of twenty twenty. And to, there's more to the letter, but in order to standard five minutes, I'll skip ahead. With the purchase of this space at one zero zero three Lincoln Drive, Ncap will have the capacity needed to develop a community hub where people in financial crisis can access more comprehensive food options, shop and select their own food, and access additional support services all from one central community space. We look forward to the opportunity to work collaboratively with community partners to get families the resources and referrals they may need to achieve long-term stability. Bellevue's been an incredible community, and we're grateful to be a part of it. And so I live, I'll just end by saying, I live in downtown Omaha, and I kind of had a deja vu moment twice. I was walking my dog, and both times I had my Bellevue Food Pantry shirt on. And there's, I live pretty close to a restaurant called Block Sixteen, which is pretty popular, but if you've never been there before, it's hard to find. And both times, same intersection, walking my dog, I helped someone find that, and they saw my shirt, and they were from Bellevue, and they're like, oh, we love the Bellevue Food Pantry. So anyway, just, I've been pretty impressed with my time on Ncap, how many, the support W gives the Food Pantry. It's, it's really impressive, and hopefully tonight we can get your approval and continue the great work with you all. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your commitment to Bellevue as well. Councilman Preister, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, Mr. Esch, thank you very much for appearing and for your good testimony. I like the kind of additions and the space for community meetings, as well as the community gardens. So, great assets. If it's a concern, and a partial concern, I'm, I'm just hopeful that your fundraising, it is a large investment, hoping you've got the support and the fundraising efforts to raise that money to buy it is all going well for Ncap.
So far, I mean, obviously, we're not there yet, but it's been going quite well. Jill Connor, who I think you may hear from later, she's with Ncap, and she's been doing a great job. And of course, we have others that have been helping us too. We kind of have a committee. So I, I think it's been going well, and I really, even though it is a large amount, no doubt about it, but I, I'm very confident that we'll meet the goal.
Wonderful. That's very good news to me.
Thank, thank you. Councilwoman Welch?
This may be a question for you, maybe Mr. Risto can answer it. What is the square footage you're currently at, and what's the square footage you're going to if this passes? Do you know?
I'm sorry, I don't know. Tom, I'm ahead.
Jim, do you know that?
So probably what you're in now is probably thirty-five hundred square feet, and you're going to be going to thirty thousand square feet, so.
Yeah, it's significantly larger.
That's awesome. That's awesome.
Yep.
Plus a, a nice-sized parking lot, too.
Yeah, indeed.
It's good for the residents to know that we're making some progress, and you know, you're getting the well-deserved space for, for great projects.
Any more questions for Mr. Esch? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question. What other type of resources or stuff do you think you'll be able to bring in?
To this location?
Yes, to the, I know you're talking about maybe a community, you said meeting place. I mean, what do you sort of envision?
Well, I know the Bellevue Library kind of offers that, as my understanding, anyway, offers a community space right now for meetings, and I think we envision continuing that same service to people who maybe aren't associated with the Food Pantry, but still would like a, a meeting space. I don't mean to be redundant, but I know we just, I think the larger space just gives us more options for some of the things that we want to do with the food, but I guess as far as other things that we could do, I, I hate to be vague, but really, it's just we want to just be able to, in addition to what we do with the Food Pantry and have a larger space to do it, we do want to continue to offer a lot of things that Bellevue Library is offering right now to outside groups, so.
Well, I think it's a great location for you. I like the space. There's probably a few of us sitting here, remember going in that building you're in currently, looking for library books at one time and checking out library books many years ago. I think the library was in maybe one or both of those buildings down there, but for Shirley, for sure, the building you're in now, I can remember going in there and looking for books. So I think it's a great opportunity. I wish you guys the best. I hope this works out great, and you can only increase your service to our people of you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Public hearing is still open, if anybody wants to come up?
Good evening. I'm Aaron Bowen. I'm the Executive Director of Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership, so nineteen oh eight Hancock Street and nineteen twelve Hancock Street. I can answer a couple of the questions that came up. Dan, as a board chair, knows a lot of things about Ncap. The staff and I live it every day, so we'll talk about that. On behalf of the Ncap team, especially our staff working at the Bellevue Food Pantry, who are here with us tonight, I really want to thank the city council, Mayor Haig, City Administrator Risto, for prioritizing food insecurity in this community, and considering this important move of the pantry to the available Bellevue Public Library property. The City of Bellevue, as Dan pointed out, has been an invaluable partner to Ncap and the Bellevue Food Pantry for many years, and of course, we are in full support of Ordinance Number forty one zero one. In my sixteen years in community action, this is a high point, I will tell you that. Time after time, in this initiative to find the pantry's permanent home, things have just fallen into place. People have continued to express their appreciation for and belief in our work at the pantry. They understand that we need a much larger space in order to do more and help more, and that means a lot to us all. And so to the question that Councilman Cook raised, so Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership offers much more than food service. So we offer that wraparound support services, because typically, food insecurity is a symptom of a larger issue. So this, right now in our current space, we have no space to meet with families, especially larger families with children. So in the library space, not only do we have shopping options for families, but spaces for confidential meetings, spaces for children to gather, to meet with families and talk about what's really going on, because ultimately, this community is remarkably generous, and we want to see that longer-term vision for a family. They have hope, but typically, when they come to us, it could be the first time they've had to ask for help at all. And so we really want to sit down and talk to them about what's going on, because moving out of poverty is a long-term strategy. It's not something that happens with a food package, but that's the start of that conversation. So the community of Bellevue is remarkable in its generosity and commitment to serve, and to your point, we wouldn't be here if we didn't think we could fundraise, because this community has come through time and again for us, and that's pretty, it's pretty awesome to see. So our volunteers who show up and work hard each day, they live their passion for helping people in Bellevue stay safe and fed. These volunteers and the many donors who give to the pantry inspire us to grow what we do, and with our new pantry, we can create many more opportunities for them to serve, as well as having partner agencies in our building. So if it's WIC, if it's someone from OFIT, we want those partners in the building rather than tell a family, you can get help here, but go elsewhere to some, for something else. We want them in our building on a regular basis. So the people who come to us, seniors, veterans, families, and often people facing food insecurity and poverty for the first time, deserve to be welcomed to a pantry that makes them feel that they are not alone, they will, they will not be stigmatized for their situation, and that they can have hope, and they can set and achieve their goals. So we know we cannot do this work alone, but together, especially with the city council and the City of Bellevue, we can fight hunger and create a space where more people can be, can be fully served. And then I'm going to give you a few examples. There are people like Hannah, a single mother fleeing a domestic violence situation who needs milk and diaper supplies for her two young children, and a way back to stability after months of chaos. Together, we can create a space for Michael, who is newly retired and experienced a significant health scare last month. This set his budget back significantly, forcing him to buy, choose to buy groceries, or pay his past due utility bill, and these are choices that our clients face every single day. Together, we can make a space for Mark and Laura, who are new to this area and living out of their car as they try to navigate what's next. And these are, these are situations, of course, we've changed, changed the name that my staff texts me when we encounter these. So these are real Bellevue situations. So Hannah, Michael, Mark, and Laura, and so many others are resilient and want to contribute to the community, and they want to help others. With consideration of this sale to Ncap, the city council is helping them. This demonstrates clearly a commitment to ensure that all Bellevue residents have the opportunity to thrive. And this is the, this does not come easy. These kind of partnerships that have lasted this long are truly remarkable and unique, in my experience. So again, our team and board directors, thank you for the opportunity, and we look forward to updating you on our progress and continuing this partnership. So thanks very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron? All right, good job. Thank you. Public hearing is still open. Anybody else want to speak regarding twelve A?
Hi, my name is Sarah Guy, and I live at four three one zero McCarty Loop in Bellevue. So I'm a Bellevue resident. I also work for Nebraska Realty, and I had the extreme honor and pleasure to get to work with Ncap in pursuing some different options for space. I think, I think it might have been last summer that I first started working with them, and we were looking at another space very seriously. In fact, the day that we were going to put the paperwork together, I think is the day that this incredible opportunity miraculously came into being. miraculously came into being, and I could not have been more excited. With the time that I had to work with Jill and Aaron, I became so excited about the work that this, that NCAP does, all of the things that it does to benefit the community and all of the potential it has to continue that work. That I very happily agreed to volunteer to work on the fundraising committee with them. I'm also volunteering my services to help them with the real estate, not looking for commission, because that's money that's going to go back into the, the work that they do, and that's what I think is the right thing to do. In addition to being a real estate agent, I also am the wife of an active-duty military member at OFIT Air Force Base. We've been stationed here for nine and a half years of my husband's fourteen and a half year career, which has been amazing. We're keeping our head down, trying to stay out the twenty here, we absolutely love Bellevue. I also absolutely love our military community, our OFIT community. And I'm very passionate about looking for ways to help enlisted service member families, because a remarkable amount of those families live paycheck to paycheck and really live very close to the poverty line. It's, it's a scary, I don't have specific statistics, but I can tell you it's, it's scary. I have had lots of conversations specifically with Jill about different ways that this space could really expand to benefit the service members who protect our country at the potential expense of their life, their family time, and yet still live paycheck to paycheck. I'm really excited about the ways that this space would allow NCAP and the Bellevue Food Pantry to expand their partnerships with OFIT and expand the way that they support service members when they're at low points in their life. So I just wanted to stand up and say how much I'm excited about this opportunity and so grateful to the City of Bellevue. We use the term highest and best use in real estate, what we believe a property, the, the best use of that property. I truly think that the best, the highest and best use of this property for the city as a whole is all of the good that will come out of this partnership if NCAP moves in. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you for your contribution and assistance as well. Public hearing is still open, anybody else want to come up and talk? Anybody else want to speak regarding twelve A, please come forward? Okay, seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Councilman Price?
Mayor, sorry to interrupt, but I would ask if it's appropriate, this is universally accepted, I believe. I've heard no opposition, I would be willing to make a motion to waive the final reading and vote on this tonight, so we can move forward. I will make a mo, if, okay, I would make a motion that we waive the third reading. And having had the public hearing, vote on this for the NCAP to take over our library tonight.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Price, second by Welch to waive the ruling for the third reading on twelve A and take a vote this evening. Any comments or questions with that? Okay, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Councilman Price?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll now move to approve the ordinance four one oh one.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Price, second by Welch to approve ordinance number four one zero one. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
All right, thank you, all done. Item twelve B, ordinance number four one zero two, request to rezone the irregular northeasterly part of tax lots fourteen A and fourteen B, located in the northwest quarter of section twenty-three Township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG to BG for the purpose of commercial development. Applicant, City of Bellevue, general location, Highway seventy-five and Highway thirty-four, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one zero two, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number thirty-six nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Highway seventy-five and Highway thirty-four. More particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide for an effective date.
Thank you, I will open up the public hearing on twelve B, is there anyone in the audience to speak regarding ordinance number four one zero two? Please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak regarding twelve B, ordinance number four one zero two, please come forward? Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing, that third reading and vote will be July fifth, two thousand twenty-two at six PM here in the council chambers. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading thirteen A, ordinance number four one zero three and ordinance to vacate Harville Circle right-of-way, north of Herman Drive, Lot One, Harville Center. Lot One, Harville Center replat one, Lot Two, Harville Center replat one, and Lot Three, Harville Center Sarpy County, Nebraska, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one zero three, an ordinance declaring necessity, expediency and propriety of vacating Harville Circle right-of-way north of Herman Drive. Lot One, Harville Street, parcel zero one one three zero one one seven one. Lot One, Harville Center replat one, parcel number zero one one five seven seven four two. Lot Two, Harville Center replat one, parcel zero one one five seven seven four four four. And Lot Three, Harville Center, parcel zero one one three zero one two zero one. Sarpy County, Nebraska, not heretofore vacated, repealing our ordinances in all parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and designating an effective date.
Thank you, second reading and public hearing will be July fifth, two thousand twenty-two at six PM here in the council chambers. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, fourteen A, request to preliminary platelots one and two. Fairview Business Park being a plating of Tax Lot F one B, part of Tax Lots F one A, H and J. Except part for NRD and Lot One C. Except part for NRD Palm Tag Subdivision, all located in the southwest quarter of Section eleven Township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. Applicant, FFC Holdings LLC, general location, Fort Crook, Fort Crook Road South and Fairview Road. And I will open up fourteen A for public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding fourteen A, please come forward?
Good evening, everyone, my name's Jeff Stoll with ENA Consulting Group, one oh nine oh nine Mill Valley Road. I'm here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions you may have. This is located in the northeast corner of Fort Crook and Fairview. We are splitting two lots of the sixty-four acres, about twenty-five acres for the north lot and then the remaining for the south lot. So here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for coming out, any questions? Nothing at this time, thank you. Public hearing is still open, anyone else wanting to speak regarding fourteen A, please come forward? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions, actually, I'll take a motion if anybody, Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item fourteen A.
Motion by Burns, second by Cook, any comments or questions now? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item fourteen A one, request to final platelots one and two, Fairview Business Park, do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item fourteen A one.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Cook, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you, okay, you're all good to go. Item fifteen, resolutions, fifteen A, resolution number two zero two two dash fifteen. Request to approve the redevelopment plan for Lot One College Apartments addition and authorize mayor to sign, applicant Stellar Realty LLC, general location, four hundred West nineteenth Avenue. So I will open up fifteen A for public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding resolution number two zero two two dash fifteen? Please come forward.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Gerald Grant, I represent the Omaha Tribe in the tribal historic preservation office. My address is one eighty West Circle Drive, Mason, Nebraska, and our headquarters is one hundred Main Street, Mason, Nebraska. I'm here tonight to actually request the plan for this particular project as we have a vested cultural interest within this area. As you may or may not know, this is where Chief Elk, Chief Big Elk was actually buried first, he was exhumed, reinterred elsewhere. But there's the potential for the other tribal members that were buried in the area as well still being there, so. I would just like, like to be involved in any future planning and anything going on with this project, if that's possible, me and my office.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are you opposing the resolution being passed?
No, I'm requesting that we be involved.
That you just be involved in the process?
Yeah, because we're going to probably, if, in the, in the event of human remains being found, we need to figure out how we get them back to my people.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, Tammy?
I can touch base and be the point of contact for that, to make sure that before anything moves forward that we get the two parties together and that communication occurs.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just make sure you have your phone number and name on there, so.
Okay.
And we will be happy to do that.
I'll, you can come grab my card too, it has my information on it, and then I just wrote Tammy's email on it as well.
Public hearing is still open, anyone else wanting to speak regarding fifteen A, please come forward? Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing on fifteen A. Any comments or questions, oh, actually, I'll take a motion, getting ahead of myself. Councilman Burns?
I move we approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Price, now any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item fifteen B, resolution number two zero two two dash sixteen. Calling the SID two forty-two bonds for fifty thousand dollars plus accrued interest and authorized the mayor to sign. Do you have a motion, Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash sixteen.
Motion by Welch, second by Price, comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, fifteen C, resolution number two zero two two dash seventeen, awarding the Bellevue Mayor's Street resurfaced major. Sorry, awarding the Bellevue Major Street resurfacing project identified as MAPPA five oh eight two to Western Engineering Company, Inc., in an amount not to exceed three million six hundred ninety thousand fifty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents and authorize mayor to sign. Do you have a motion, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item fifteen D, resolution number two zero two two dash eighteen. Approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the city's deferred compensation plan as amended and restated. Do you have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash eighteen.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Price, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item fifteen E, resolution number two zero two two dash nineteen. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the city's Nebraska Retirement Income Plan as amended and restated. Take a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash nineteen.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Price, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen, current business, sixteen A, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Charles Verona and Son Construction Company for the Harland Drive over Fort Crook Road Bridge approach. Replacement and repairs in an amount not to exceed one million five hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and thirty cents. Plus potential city initiated change orders of up to ten percent or one hundred fifty-nine thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and three cents. For a total amount of one million seven hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. Do you have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen A.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you, item seventeen, administration reports, comments must be limited to items on the current reports. Monthly reports is given at the first council meeting of each month. June report will be attached to the July fifth council packet, any questions on the last administration report? Okay, those will go in the record, item eighteen, closed session, eighteen A litigation update. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I move that City Council go into closed session at this time for prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals involved in this matter. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session are confidential litigation updates. The following individuals will be included in the closed session. Mayor Rusty Heick, Jim Risto, Mark Albert, Paul Cook, Don Price, Thomas Burns, Kathy Welch, Jerry McCaw, Bree Robbins.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. To go into executive session, is there any comments or discussion? Okay, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, the time is six forty-eight and we have voted to go into executive session to discuss litigation items. And the closed session will take place here in the council chambers, if your name was not read off, please leave the room. leave the room.